Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will call the common council to order. I will ask our clerk to call the rule to determine a quorum.
Alderman Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barzak.
Here.
Chapeleski.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Lysick.
Excused.
May.
Here.
Pope.
Here.
Frankie.
Excused.
Here.
Eight present to excused.
We have a quorum. Alderman Vitale will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. That takes America, unity of the public, which stands on the nation, on the ground, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
We have five items up for public hearing this evening. I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
A hearing on the special use permit for the Doghouse Tavern to establish an extension of premises to utilize an existing outdoor patio located at 1641 South 68th Street.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The area under question today is a C-2 zoning district, which is a commercial zoning district, and the request is for outdoor dining. Currently, in the back area of the tavern is a patio area already constructed that's only allowed for outdoor smoking or whatever, but not for food or drink. This public hearing is only for outdoor dining. If they want to allow outdoor consumption of alcoholic beverages, that will require a license through the License and Health Committee. The proposal is to have the hours of operation of the patio from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., which is consistent with the balance of operations. The area also is going to be required to put additional fence on the north and some additional fencing on the south. The properties were built back in the 1920s. This is a classic example of a traditional neighborhood. We have commercial residential properties in the same area. Historically, taverns were viewed as people's living room. Lots of neighborhood activities took place in there. The plant commission has reviewed this recommendation, or requested its recommended approval. We have received one objection to date concerning noise and value and those types of issues, which are pretty consistent with the 128 or whatever taverns we have around town. A lot of them are in residential districts. If you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Do we have any questions or comments from the common council on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Barzak.
Couple of questions, John. First of all, according to pictures, it looks like it's built already?
Pardon?
It looks like it's already built?
The patio is built, and that's only for outdoor smoking or talking, but no food can be consumed nor alcoholic beverages can be consumed.
I think you know my history on these. When we first started to do the patios, they were for food consumption only, and then it got into, and all of a sudden, they're putting them in for drinking, et cetera, which I'm totally against. Is there a guarantee that they will never, is there something that we can put in a special use that they will never consider asking for an extension of premises, that alcohol will not be served there?
No, they will be, or they have already submitted an application for extension of premises for alcoholic consumption.
You have answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Barzak. Are there any other questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
John, what's the proximity between the patio and the lot line? Was it about three feet maybe, or four?
I'm sorry, what's the what?
The proximity, the distance between the lot line, between the...
It's very close. It immediately abuts two multifamily properties. To the south is a fiveplex, and the north is a fourplex. So it's, the lot line is where the fences will go, and so they've been neighbors for, to the 1920s.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, Alderman Vitale. Are there any other questions or comments from the common council on public hearing number one?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
John, they built the patio, and currently their patrons are allowed to go out there and smoke essentially till 2:00 a.m. right now? That's already allowed just because they built the patio, or that's what they're asking for?
I'll have to double-check on that, but I do not think that there is a restriction on hours of outdoor smoking.
Okay, and then...
I will check on that.
And the building itself is just a single-story, it's just straight commercial, it's not a mixed-use, this particular building that...
It's been a tavern.
And you mentioned dining at first, but this really is just a tavern? They might do like frozen pizzas, or...
It's very typical of many of the taverns that have requested, you have to have an outdoor dining license before you can apply for consumption of alcoholic beverages for extension of premises.
Do you know what level of food service license they have from the city, the basic? They probably have the basic food service license.
As I understand, it's the basic restaurant license.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Are there any other questions or comments from the common council? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? We ask that you use the podium up here and sign in either before or after your comments, and also if you could give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. Name is Lisa Wood. Do you want my, the address that I own that's in West Dallas, or my home residence?
You can give us both.
Okay. Home residence at 6175 Washington Circle, Owatosa. Property that I own is 1645-47, excuse me, South 68th Street, which is located immediately south of the Doghouse Tavern. Go ahead. I previously sent an email objecting to the outdoor patio, not necessarily because I think that the Doghouse Tavern is a horrible neighbor, but because I'm concerned about what an outdoor patio will do to the health, safety, and value of my property. It's indicated this really is a means, it sounds as though this step is really just a means to an end to get the alcohol consumption license. The building, if you can see in the picture on the right, that white building is our property. It's maybe five feet at most, next to where that patio will be. The bedrooms have windows that face that patio, and I certainly wouldn't want to be sleeping or living next to a patio with a lot of people outside drinking. Maybe they'll be eating as well, but drinking, smoking, you know, they may be going outside to smoke now, but certainly, if they're allowed to go outside and drink, that smoking's going to increase. There's a young child living in the building. I'm concerned for their, for her safety and well-being. I'm concerned about vandalism. We just had our property tagged the other day. People are going to be outside wandering around. This is a residential area. I understand there's some commercial across the street, but this is incredibly close proximity to a residential home. It is a three-family unit, so there's a lot of people living there, and I don't think that allowing people to eat, smoke, and drink in such close proximity to a residential home is acceptable. The purpose of the special use is specifically to make sure that it does, that the use is compatible. It's not a permitted use. It's not something that's automatically granted. It needs to be compatible with the neighborhood. It needs to fit in. When you look at the ordinance and the elements that need to be satisfied in order to grant the special use permit, several of them are not applicable, one of which use value enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for permitted use will be substantially impaired or diminished by the special use in this case. We do believe that putting an outside patio, allowing people to drink, smoke, and eat, will diminish our property value, and it will also diminish the enjoyment of the people that reside in our building. Another element is that the outdoor patio will be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare, and conflict with the purpose and intent of the ordinances. Again, I believe that this being a special use, this is why these ordinance were put in place, to make sure that it doesn't affect health, safety, well-being. Again, I believe that it does affect the potential of safety, health, and well-being of my tenants at that property. Further, we're concerned about, in addition to health, safety, well-being, we're concerned about the value of our property and our inability to rent the units. We already get people that show up and see that it's next to the tavern and say, "Never mind." Tavern's been there for a long time. It was there before we bought the property. I understand that that's going to happen. We have had complaints of noise, but again, I've been tolerant in the sense that we have to coexist, and so we've kind of let those things go. But as far as an outdoor patio, I have to draw the line. I think that that's going above and beyond what should be allowed in a residential area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to comment or has questions on our first public hearing this evening?
Joe Jans, 9606 West Harding Place, Dallas, USA. As you can imagine, I got a few things to say about these tavern issues, and let me remind you of some laws that are in place that will alleviate the fears of the woman that just spoke. First of all, there's nothing to say that anybody can't go in that backyard right now and smoke. State law says you can smoke within reasonable distance of a door, and you cannot define what reasonable is. So people can be out there right now until 2:00 in the morning, smoking. The second thing, that I have never read it, but I would imagine that in the city of West Dallas, there's a noise ordinance. So after 10 o'clock, if the people right now are out there making noise, smoking, then they're in violation. Then the squad can be called, and you can be, that can be taken care of. It's no different than if they're outside drinking. You can smoke, but you put a beer in the hand, and there's going to be all this civil disobedience? Again, if there's a problem after 10 o'clock, call the cops. If it continues to be a problem, which it isn't right now, and as far as I've heard, there's never been a complaint about noise outside of the Doghouse. So also, I've been going to taverning meetings for over 20 years. I had a place down the street, you probably know Liquid Johnny's, applied for a beer garden in 1982. At that time in the city of Milwaukee, I was allowed the extension of whatever I did inside to go outside, so I could have live music outside till 1:00 in the morning, 365 days a year. Of course, I didn't do that because no noise after 10 o'clock. So it's been 30, 32 years now that that beer garden is still there at Liquid Johnny's. There's never been a complaint. There's never been a problem with noise. Now, I brought this up to some of you for years, that I've never heard of a problem with a beer garden in any municipality in Milwaukee County. There are probably at least as many, maybe twice as many beer gardens in Milwaukee as there are bars in West Dallas, in exactly this situation. I know of bars where they have tables and chairs out front. The bar owner is responsible enough and has the obligation to make sure that what goes on outside is no different than what goes on inside. So all these hypothetical things that I've heard over the years here when somebody applies for beer gardens, because that's what they are, and this came about because of 2010, when the no-smoking ordinance went into effect, then everybody, to compete, you have to allow people to go outside. Now, this is another example of stiffening it to the small business. The big bars don't have a problem, because the big bars are in situations where there aren't neighbors. So if you're on Greenfield or National, Lincoln, you know, you're not going to have neighbors as close, but they still have the same obligations. You can't, you have to control things, and bar owners have shown that they've been able to control things. So obviously, you got to give these people the opportunity to do it, and thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Jans. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience on public hearing number
Chris Kaczmarewski. I represent the Doghouse. We have a standing order that all the activity that goes on outside will end at 9:00 p.m. We don't want it to go to 10:00 p.m. or 2:00 a.m. So we're limiting it to 9:00 a.m., 9:00 p.m. to satisfy our neighbors, and it's a nice family bar, never have problems, like he said, and there's never been a problem in the bar, and we, that's just the way we want to run it. 9:00 p.m. is our limit. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can we have your address of the, I guess of the bar?
1204 South 73rd Street.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments from the audience on public hearing number one this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will close our first public hearing. I will ask our clerk to read public hearing number two.
A hearing on the special use permit for Lily Massage, a proposed massage therapy business to be located at 10637 West Oklahoma Avenue.
Mr. Steeble.
The subject of the hearing tonight is 10637 South or West Oklahoma. It's at a tremendously remodeled building. The owner's done a marvelous job. C-4 commercial, a highest-use area, but the massage parlor, massage spa requires a special use, and that's the purpose of the hearing. The building is about 8,250 square feet. This occupant will be taking about 1,400 feet, and the hours of operation are 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. Forty parking stalls will technically be required, 27 are provided on-site. That's been the historical use of that building. The plant commission has reviewed this request and has recommended approval, and we've received no objections to date. If you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions or comments from the common council on this item? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close public hearing number two, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number three.
A hearing on the special use permit for Big Ebs, a proposed new restaurant to be located at 1325 through 1329 South 70th Street.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Big Ebs Pizza has been located for many years on Lincoln and has now been relocated, and the interest of full disclosure, I want to mention that I have Big Ebs on speed dial. The proposal is it a C-1 zoning district because it's going to be a restaurant, it requires a special use, and that's the purpose of the public hearing. They'll be dining in and carry out, and so we're delighted to see that they're going to be adding the dining, in the dining experience. The outside area is currently a special use area because of Bozz's Tavern, and Bozz's Tavern currently has a special use for outdoor dining and for liquor consumption in these areas. One of the possible future additions to Big Ebs is to be doing a bakery, and that's why the restaurant hours are being proposed from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. The purpose of 2:00 a.m. is because of the customer base, the adjacent bar. The patio, however, will be open as the adjoining special use is 10:00 a.m. to midnight. The rear of the site is going to do some additional landscaping. Dumpster enclosure is kind of in disrepair, and so that will be repaired, and the dumpsters will be in a full, typical enclosure. There'll be six tables in the dining room area, and then the outdoor dining area. The plant commission has reviewed this recommendation and has recommended approval, and we've received no objections to date. If you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the common council on public hearing number three?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
First of all, I'd like to say I love this idea. Big Ebs is a landmark in our community. Been here about 30 years, 40 years, I don't know. John, do you know how long? And I'm glad to see that they're actually going from a carry-out-only model to a sit-down dining thing. It looks like their business is, they're planning on growing the business, they're going to keep their delivery and side of it. I just have a couple of questions. The plant commission report mentioned that they were, they were going to consider asking for beer and wine license for this new location, and if I remember correctly, the neighboring Bozz's, they, their, their extension of premises actually wraps around the front, entire front of the building. And I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to get in any kind of confusion eventually about where the drinks are going, because if those licenses be granted, I understand that's not the purpose of this. I mean, I assume the landlord's entirely on board with this, and Big Ebs understands that, or the Big Ebs staff understands that currently that outdoor patio in front of them is really under the control of the bar next door, you know, I mean...
Yes, he's very much aware of that.
Okay. Again, I'm glad to see him. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Are there any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
And following up with your disclosure, Mr. Steeble, I will disclose to the council that my wife worked at Big Ebs while in high school.
[laughing]
No, my wife is not that young.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments that are not a personal connection to the great pizza at Big Ebs? Okay. Are there any questions or comments or accolades from the audience on this item for public hearing this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public hearing number three, and we will take items number four and five together. I will ask the clerk to read our last two.
A hearing on both a special use permit and the transitional use permit to establish Expert Car Care, a proposed auto repair facility to be located at 7030 West National Avenue and 15 Star Star South 71st Street.
Mr. Steeble.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the northeast corner of National Avenue, 71st Street, was the former Expert Auto. This is the auto repair place, and they also have this garage area, and the subject of the public hearing is because it's been vacant for more than a year, it has lost its previous special use, and the purpose of the hearing is to, is to consider the special use for the car repair facility, and then also a transitional use, and I'll get to that in just a moment, right now. The transitional use, because this is Zone C-2, and this is RB-1, instead of rezoning it into commercial, our code allows a transitional use for parking no longer than 70 feet back from the existing facility, and that's well within that area of the facility. It's only about 60 feet. Being a C-2, auto repair area is permitted as a special use, and that's the purpose of the public hearing. 95 stalls will be required, 40 stalls are provided, 21 in this parking lot, as a rather large building, so 19 are provided in sight. Hours of operation will be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There'll be extensive renovations to the building, particularly resurfacing the parking lot and removing the barbed wire and the fencing around there, and replacing it with something more compatible with the neighborhood. There will also be extensive window replacement. The garage doors that are here will be replaced with glass doors, and tuck pointing to cleaning of the brick of the building. The areas that are currently painted will be allowed to be repainted. Also, the back of the building will be replaced, all the glass will be replaced, as well as the glass along the west side of the building. The plant commission has reviewed this proposal, has recommended approval, and we've received no objection to date. If you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there questions or comments from the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
First of all, I like to see this property cleaned up, and I think this is, this is good, because it's being done by a private entity rather than us having to do it, so on that aspect, I'm happy with it. What I don't quite understand is why we would allow a parking lot in a residential district? Why wouldn't we rezone that one property to become a commercial property? Is it normal for us to allow parking lots to be built in residential districts?
Yes, because historically it was done. In our zoning code, we recognize that that has been a historical problem, and instead of rezoning it to commercial, so at some point in time, somebody could build a commercial building on that lot, and to preserve the residential character, we incorporated what we called the transitional use, so that can remain as a parking lot, but only a maximum of 70 feet into the residential area. It sort of does, makes it the commercial reuse without rezoning to allow any commercial use to go on that property in the future.
Where else have we done that?
The most recent example I could think of is the restaurant on Greenfield Avenue here, the Greek Restaurant. That back parking lot is a transitional use.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
John, do we have an idea how many employees are going to be involved in this eventually? I'm just trying to get an idea of economic impact for the, for the neighborhood.
I believe they, I'm not sure if Representative the owner is here that can answer that.
I believe he is. I'll catch him at recess.
But I, we could talk to you at recess about that, but it's several, several employees.
And this is going to be repair only? This is not going to be sales? Is that correct?
It's a car repair facility.
And, because that's a pretty big parking lot in the back there, and I'm just, and we have a rule about cars can't be there like two weeks, right? That's all going to be enforced.
And no cars can, repaired cars can be in the street and that sort of thing.
Right.
That's the purpose of the special use. If that's violated, it can be revoked.
But let's say there's a late-night accident, say 2:00, 3:00 a.m. A tow truck might come to the site and deliver a car either inside or into that parking lot?
That's very possible.
That's very possible. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Any other questions or comments on our last public hearings? Okay. Seeing none, we will close part D of our agenda this evening, and we will move on to item E, which is citizen participation. This is an opportunity for people to address the council on matters of interest to them. Do we have anybody who wishes to address the council under citizen participation this Do we have visitors from London?
Yes, hello. My name is Dr. Hasty Lanyon. I am with the Village Playhouse, and just here to announce in front of the people who live in this area that we are having a, a play of sorts that opens up on October 17th over at the Village Playhouse. It is The Strange Case of Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde. I, Dr. Lanyon, play Jekyll's friend, confidants, ever since we were kids. This is Helen.
Hello, darling, please.
Oh, speak into the mic.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I am Miss O'Neil, but I will meet Mrs. Enfield soon, so I'd love for you guys to come watch. And this is my very good friend, Dr. Lanyon, and we will be performing...
October 17th.
October 17th. So we would love for you guys to come out and come see the show. It'll be great.
And this is at Inspiration Studios?
Yes.
Yes, to be official, it's on 1500 South 73rd Street. You can record that with your devices. It should be a very interesting play. We even have a show on Halloween night for those who like that sort of thing. And it should be gripping. It'll be a little bit creepy, as the director calls it, but it should be great fun. So tell everyone that there's a theater there, Village Playhouse, and it would be great if you all came out and saw the show. We have seven different shows, and you can participate, and again, it's for the arts. Arts is very important, so when you're not about doing your political things, you can have fun and come to the theater and have a, just a jolly good time. Seriously.
Yes, yes. Thank you, guys.
Doctor, is there, is there a website you'd like to share with us? Because we are on television as well.
Oh, yes. It's thevillagplayhouse.org. You can go there, and you can get tickets, and we're also on Facebook.
We are on Facebook.
Yes, Facebook.
You can get tickets at... You can get tickets at...
Oh, yes, you can get tickets at, bro, paper tickets, whatever that is. But you can get everything online. And let me introduce this young lady. She is also part of the play.
I will be selling flowers, but watch out for the scary-faced man.
Oh.
Yes, she's meaning Dr. Hyde. He is rather a brute, but don't be alarmed. He, he can be a bit of a bore at times, but it's still in good fun.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Quite. Thank you.
And I'll have flyers and cards outside when you're done, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Do we have anybody else that wishes to address the council under citizen participation? Got a tough act to follow.
I mean...
I said you have a tough act to follow.
Yeah, I guess.
I guess we were erroneously told they were going to discuss what they were going to do with TLS apartment on 74th and Washington. That's right in my backyard. And before anybody moved in there or did anything, I bet I tried for months calling City Hall to ask what was going on, because I knew there was something going in there before Transitional Living Services went in. New, we don't, it's still the same owners, everything's still the same. Never told me. Now, we've had two murders there. I heard they were, what I said should be done was tear the building down, get the people out. Even if there was a fire there, it wouldn't have been the worst thing. But get the people out of the building, tear the building down, and plant grass or a garden or what, or another lot, I don't know. Anybody who would want to live in a building where somebody's life was taken, and that was, the last one was a sadist. She was just a poor soul that sat, her best friend were her pack of cigarettes. She never bothered anyone that I knew of. You'd walk by, she'd say, "I like your dog," or something like that. It was rotten, terrible. I still haven't gotten over it. And my niece called me from Maryland, because she had forgotten my address. And she said, "You know, Aunt Mary, I went to look your, your address up on the internet." And she said, "You know, your house is shown on the internet with yellow police tape all around from the railing, the front porch railing around to the back." I said, "No, I didn't, Margaret." And she said, "It is, and it doesn't look good." So, I don't know what they're going to do with that building. The people are moving out, they're very sad. And one of them said he's going to come back and visit us. He was not a bad man, but he, these were people who not only were mentally unsound, but they were villains. He said, "We've all got a problem." I said, "What did you do, Anthony, that's so bad?" He said, "I could never tell you. Never will I ever tell you how bad it was bad." So, I don't know what they, whether it was the state or the city is responsible for putting that, those people in a neighborhood with little three- and four-year-old children riding their tricycles, their skateboards, and their scooters. I don't know what kind of people those are that allow that type of a situation to be put into a neighborhood that was not too bad a neighborhood. The houses have gone down in their value. The one across the street from it is in bankrupt, it was foreclosed on. So, there are people, I don't know how many families are living there. They're growing vegetables outside. But it's a sad story, and I think it's something that definitely should be done. Mrs. Probst called me, that's, that is your name, and told me not to get so excited about what goes on. Well, I said, "When you're living with it, it's not nice." So, it's bad enough with all the other things that go on in that neighborhood, but that's the worst. One, one of the worst, not the worst, the noise from the state fair, we get it, right straight down the middle. Every, five days a week, they try, run tires over there, see how they work. That's one of them. So, it's, it's not yet, not a good neighborhood anymore. So, soon as most of us can get our house, things in order, I'm going to get out. Not because I want to, because I love my home, and I spent a lot of money on it, but I don't know if you got the idea, they were going to discuss something about that building here. But that's what we were told to come and listen in. I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. We will go on to announcing our standing committees will be meeting during recess. Those room numbers are listed on your agendas on page two. Next, we have item G, the mayor's report. I just have a couple of quick things. First, it is Fire Prevention Safety Week, so just want to remind everybody to check their smoke detectors. It's a good reminder. This coming Saturday, October 11th, a reminder that it is the citywide cleanup. It will be starting at the Police Department substation at 69th and National, and it begins at 9:00 AM. It wraps up at noon with lunch to follow. Volunteers are welcome. There will be bags, gloves, and pickers provided. I want to mention a reminder that the Chamber of Commerce has their annual Forks and Corks event coming up in November. There is a ticket savings if you order prior to October 15th. This is an event that has wine, beer, and tastings from all the area's best restaurants, live music, and artwork on display. It is on Sunday, November 2nd, from 3:00 until 6:00. And this year, it is going to be indoors at the atrium at the Summit Place Office Complex. Again, that's on November 2nd. There is a sign-up this coming weekend for the West Ellis Little League on, again, on Saturday, October 11th. It's going to be a busy day here in West Ellis. From 1:00 until 5:00 at the Tri-City National Bank at 6767 West Greenfield Avenue. More information can be found on the Facebook page of the Little League, or you can go to their website, which is eteamswithaz.com/LLWA. After the sign-up date, I am told that space is going to be severely limited, so please reserve your spot on the rosters soon. I want to quickly thank the West Ellis Women's Club for providing the purple ribbons out in our plaza. Just a reminder that the month of October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And lastly, on the 14th of October at 11:00, we are going to be breaking ground on a new development here in West Dallas. Ferguson Plumbing will start constructing a 72,000-square-foot facility, and there will also be on that site an additional 50,000-square-foot spec building for future manufacturing. That concludes the mayor's report this evening. We will move on now to item H. Are there any reports from the elder people? Alderman Haas.
Yeah, Mayor Devine, thank you. I'd like to extend my thanks to our Department of Public Works Building and Sign Division on Highway 100. There is improved street signage. If you note, on the trombone arm, it's called, which is an overhead traffic signal arm, there are now big green signs at the major intersections identifying the cross streets of Lincoln Avenue, Cleveland Avenue, Oklahoma and National, as well as Highway 100. And that's definitely an improvement for making Highway 100 a, a place for folks that might not be familiar to be able to find where they're going.
Thank you, Alderman Haas. Do we have any other reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigle.
I'd like to extend a big thank you to the downtown West Ellis Business Improvement District. Had their 24th Annual Car Show this past weekend. Beautiful day. My understanding is they had a record turnout for registered vehicles, 489 cars. I spoke to many of the participants. One guy said he's, "I look forward to this car show every year. This is the funnest one they come to." It was very well attended. Again, a big thank you to the volunteers and staff, all the people who helped make that happen. Also, wanted to remind people of construction going on in the second district right now. Our skate park is nearing completion on 84th and National, and I happened to see, I believe, yesterday that earth is being pushed around in the 8200 block of West Greenfield Avenue, where our hotel development has now unofficially gotten underway. I don't think we've scheduled a groundbreaking yet, but they've begun the preliminary processes for engineering the, the site for the hotel construction. Again, it'll be Hampton Inn and Suites, and they're shooting to have it open for next year's state fair. So, that's a couple of great positive sources. On right over here, the next block east of us, Anchor Banks Parking, their building is done, and they're finishing up with a brand-new parking lot there right now, too. So, lots of great things happening in West Dallas.
Thank you, Alderman Weigle. Any other comments?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Probst.
I would just like also to remind individuals, as Alderman Weigle was discussing road construction in the area, Hicks Street in the second district is now back open again, and DPW and the signs crew has, have put up a number of no-trucking signs, and it's important, I walked around to some of the neighboring businesses on Hicks today, to alert them to the new signage that is up to prohibit them from taking their trucks down that street. And I want to thank the DPW crews for doing such a nice job re-landscaping the area. It's beautiful, and it's really nice to have it back open.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other reports from the elder persons this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
Just want to remind everyone, tomorrow is Walk to School Day, so this is a good reminder to everybody to, we talk about the three Es, engineering, enforcement, and education. And I think educating our kids and everything, the proper way to cross a street is very important. We can't rely on stop signs, we can't rely on that other driver on the street to make a stop. We've got to do some, some better education of our kids on that. And tomorrow, at Wilson and at Walker Elementary, I know they're having the police officers, Officer Nelterson is here, he'll be at one of the schools, I believe. And at Wilson, they're having some people come in from the Bicycle Federation to do a special thing on pedestrian safety. So, really excited about that. And I wanted to quickly wish my wife, if she's watching, she might be, a happy eighth anniversary today. And while I'm at it, I want to, to elder person Probst and her husband Joe, wish you guys a 25th anniversary today. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Devine.
Thank you, Alderman. Are there any other elder persons' reports this evening? Okay, we'll go on to item I, the approval of the minutes. Alderman Vitale.
Mr. Mayor, approval of the minutes of the common council regal meeting of September 16.
Second.
There is a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item J. I'll ask for a motion to place item seven on file and refer items eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 to the city attorney for a legal review. So moved.
Second.
There is a motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Vitale. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Standing committee reports, Administration and Finance Committee. Alderman Vitale.
Well, I could, yeah, I was going to, but I can read it now.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, the item 15 already was actually discussed at the last September 16 meeting, was approved, recommended for approval. So, Mr. Mayor, at this point, I mean, we can act upon to vote on it.
Okay. There is a motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Alderman Weigle. Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
Thirty-seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
While you're up here, you want to call for recess?
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess during the, after the common council meeting, we come back to the common council chamber again.
Second. Here is a motion with a second by Alderman Weigle. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.